Now, we will begin the formal presentation and I would like to welcome everyone to the public hearing for the State Road 389 East Avenue PD&amp;E study. For our online attendees, if you are experiencing audio issues, please check your computer speaker settings. If you are experiencing any other technical difficulties, please contact technical support at the address shown on the screen. Hi, my name is Tori Y and I'm the project manager for the PD&amp;E study. I will be moderating this public hearing for the State Road 389 East Avenue Project Development and Environment or PD&amp;E study. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, I would like to thank you for your interest in this study. Alan Van, project coordinator for FDOT, is also with me tonight at the in-person location at the DAFN clubhouse in Panama City, Florida. We are both being supported by representatives of FDOT District 3 and the consulting team. We would also like to take a moment and thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrated public hearing presentation.
The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the State Road 389 East Avenue Project Development and Environment or PD&amp;D study, Financial Management Project Number 440300-3-22-01 and 440300-4-22-01. In addition to the PD&amp;D staff here, a representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding residential or businesses' relocations on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we start the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this meeting. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one in the upper right corner shown here. To listen to the meeting, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select telephone in the audio pane of the control panel and dial in using the information displayed. All virtual attendees will be placed in listen-only mode throughout the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those submitted at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from the in-person meeting will be addressed first. Verbal comment requests submitted during online registration will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using go-to webinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided at registration and unmute you. If the microphone icon is green, you are ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon is orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once and it will notify you that you are unmuted and then you can provide your comment. Again, you will not be on camera at any time if you join online. During the public comment period after the formal presentation, in-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. A recording of the webinar will be available at the project website three days after the hearing. You can also call the project manager after the public hearing to request additional project information. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at the city of Panama City City Hall since October 19th and will continue to be available through November 26, 2021 at this location. The office is located at 501 Harrison Avenue, Panama City. All public hearing documents are in the chat box area designated for documents and are available for viewing and download. The documents are also available on the project website. You may also view project documents tonight at the in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvement, its conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. There are three primary components to tonight's hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation where you were invited to view the project displays and to speak directly with the project team and provide your comments in writing through the online geoform or through the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and propose methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. And third, a formal comment period following this presentation. For those attending in person, you will have the opportunity to provide oral statements at the microphone or you may provide your comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. For those attending in listen-only mode, comments may be emailed, mailed to the FDOT project manager. The contact information can be found in the handout located in the control panel during this session, which you can download onto your own device. You may also visit NWFLroads.com/virtualmeetings for more details. This PD&amp;D study, which includes the proposed improvements of State Road 389 East Avenue, has been conducted by the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT District 3, in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws and pursuant to 23 United States Code Section 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, signed on December 14, 2016, establishing the FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee as the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on the slide and is being held to provide you with the opportunity to comment on this project. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the Florida Department of Transportation District 3 office or the Tallahassee office of the Florida Department of Transportation. This contact information is also provided in the project handout. The PD&amp;D process evaluates potential impacts to determine an alternative using continuous community outreach to ensure that all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. The study limits extended on State Road 389 from State Road 30, US 98B, 5th Street, to south of County Road 2337 Sherman Avenue, and on East Avenue from Port Entrance to south of State Road 30, US 98B, 5th Street, approximately 3.6 miles. The purpose of the project is to address existing roadway deficiencies in order to facilitate the movement of freight and people along State Road 389 East Avenue. The project is needed to address operational and safety issues on State Road 389 East Avenue, as well as provide pedestrian and bicycle connectivity along East Avenue. The proposed improvements are consistent with local transportation plans, including the Bay Transportation Planning Organization's 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan and Transportation Improvement Program, as well as the State Transportation Improvement Program, STATE, TIP. Three build alternatives and a no-build alternative were initially evaluated during the feasibility study. All three build alternatives include improving the existing corridor with respect to a west, center, or east alignment. The no-build alternative assumes no improvements and does not meet the purpose and need for the project. However, it does provide a baseline condition against which to compare and measure the effects of the build alternatives. A comparison of the build alternatives is available within the feasibility study. The west-left alignment will result in impacts to the Margaret Cade Lewis School, the Millville Cemetery, and the Joe Moody Harris Park. The center alignment has impacts to the surrounding areas similar to the west-left alignment. From the analysis performed during this study, the east-right alignment has less community impacts and does not impact those previously mentioned sites. The center and west-left alignments resulted in more impacts to the surrounding area. As a result, the FDOT is recommending the east-right alignment as the preferred alternative. The preferred alternative is broken into two typical sections as shown on this slide. Please see the concept boards located at the in-person facility and provided online in the documents chat box or at www.nwflroads.com/virtualmeetings for easy viewing for more detail. The first proposed typical section from Business 98 to Sherman Avenue is a two-lane urban typical section with a design speed of 45 miles per hour and a posted speed of 35 miles per hour. The total proposed right-of-way width needed for this section is 104 feet. It features 12-foot travel lanes, 12-foot shared-use path on the west side, a 33-foot median, and a 6-foot sidewalk on the east side. This typical section allows for future capacity needs. The second proposed typical section is within the city-owned portion of the project, from Port Panama City to Business 98. It is a two-lane divided urban typical section with a design speed of 35 miles per hour and a posted speed of 35 miles per hour. The total right-of-way width needed for this section is 60 feet. It features 11-foot travel lanes, a 10-foot shared-use path on the west side, and a 6-foot wide sidewalk adjacent to the curb line on the east side with a narrower median to avoid right-of-way impacts. An intersection control evaluation, ICE analysis, was performed on five intersections within the study limits: 3rd Street, Business 98, 11th Street, 15th Street, and Sherman Avenue. The purpose of the ICE analysis is to determine viable candidates for intersection control based on capacity, safety, and geometric constraints. For both the 11th Street and Sherman Avenue intersections, it is being recommended that a roundabout be moved forward into the design phase. This slide illustrates the 11th Street roundabout. This slide illustrates the Sherman Avenue roundabout. It will tie into the improvements related to the US 231 widening project. The roundabouts at both 11th Street and Sherman Avenue are projected to operate significantly better and to result in fewer crashes than a signalized intersection. An important element of any PD&amp;D study is the evaluation of potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental resources was evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features. Engineering and traffic factors were also considered. This slide illustrates the impacts for the preferred alternative. Cultural impacts resulting in one de minimis use of the historic Atlanta and St. Andrews Bay Railroad. Natural impacts resulted in 0.39 acres of wetland impacts. These are not expected to substantially affect the stability or overall quality of the surrounding wetland systems. Floodplain encroachment is expected in two locations. Physical impacts resulted in zero noise-sensitive sites recommended for further evaluation in the project's final design phase. Nine sites of potential contamination risk. The social impacts resulted in 106 parcel impacts, nine business relocations, 29 residential relocations. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary relocation of residences or businesses. On this project, we anticipate the relocation of 29 families and nine businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you are being moved and you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedure to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: if you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. A representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here tonight and will be able to provide you with further assistance if you have questions regarding residential or business relocations on this project. These impacts were evaluated to determine the recommended alternative, as well as right-of-way and construction costs. The total estimated project cost of the preferred alternative is $91.7 million. A comparison of the impacts from the build alternative is provided in the environmental document prepared for the project. Access management classes are used to determine the locations of driveway connections, median openings, and traffic signals to improve safety and traffic flow. The current State Road 389 East Avenue facility is an access class 6. The preferred alternative is proposed as an access class 3 to meet the needs of a strategic intermodal system, CIST, facility. Proposed access and management modifications are on display at the in-person facility online in the chat box and can be found at www.nwflroads.com/virtualmeetings. If you have a concern regarding the access to your parcel, please provide your comments. This graphic represents the delivery process for a project, beginning with the feasibility phase and ending with the construction phase. This project is funded for the PD&amp;D study phase within the five-year FDOT work program. It is currently not funded for design, right-of-way, or construction within the five-year work program. Thank you. That concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. After the comment period closes and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PD&amp;D document will be sent to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management for location and design concept acceptance. Please note that we will not be responding to your comments and questions today, but we will respond in writing at a later date. Anyone desiring to make a statement will now have an opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways you may provide your comments: written, or verbally, or online.
Okay, we will now call upon the in-person participants who have requested to speak. As I call your speaker number assigned when you register to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address. If you represent in an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Speaker number one? Ms. Bittman? Okay, thank you. Okay, speaker number two?
I didn't speak at the last. Okay, my name is Gregory Clark. I live at 510150 Northeast Avenue. I didn't speak at the last meeting. I just listened. Some things were said, promises that were made that were not held. When they redid our road, they're supposedly fixing on East Avenue, that really didn't need to be fixed. The one on the next road that has a huge, huge pothole needed to be fixed. They did not bring the road up to the level where the driveways were. So I wind up having to lay cement to meet the road. Now, we have this one going down that same road that you just tore up, which makes no sense. Why you tore it up in the first place if you were going to do this? It should have waited. I want to know, one, how far down the road is this? At which stage where my section will be? And also, the speed limit, they don't, they don't go by that speed limit anyway, even though there's a school right across the road from me, they just, they still speed. Also, the light, what takes too long and traffic just backs up on that road, literally. So you can't get out and you can't get in.
Thank you for your comment.
So, Amy Sage-Clark, I'm his wife, 150 Northeast Avenue. Like he said, when the road was repaved, whatever they did to that light, it literally backs the port traffic up to where we cannot enter or exit our home every single day. If you have to be to work at 5, you have to leave at 3 because they get off at 3:30, they get off at 4, they get off at 4:30, they get off at 5, and it is backed up past our house. And it sits at that light for like two or three times. It wasn't, I've lived there for six and a half years, it wasn't like that until they repaved the road. Like he said, they left this big dip because my driveway in 2015 was made to meet the road so that it was a smooth entry and a, and a, and a smooth exit. When they redid this road, we went to the commission meeting and they assured us that they were gonna fix that. Well, boom, in, boom, out, every single day is gonna tear up our car. So my poor husband had just been, Saturday, pouring cement so that the road met our driveway where it did before they tore it up. Also, when they tore it up, that stuff is still laying in, in the roadways and the ditchways, I guess you could say, or whatever. They didn't come back and clean up their mess. So you just spent thousands of dollars to repave a road that you want to repave again in five years. Ridiculous, when like he said, there are more roads in this town that need beautification and repaving. This is a port, you're talking about 18-wheelers coming down here. They don't need trees and grass to get where they're going. And then the speed limit being 35 and you're gonna keep it that way? Like he said, they go 45 down there now. Margaret Cade Lewis is a special needs school. Blind children, handicapped children, and they fly down there. My own personal son has autism and he doesn't play in the front yard because those trucks fly out there every day. So it's a residential area. Anywhere else in Bay County you go to residential, it's 25. Anywhere else around the school, it's 25. You want to do all this fancy stuff to the road, that's fine, but the speed limit needs to be 25 because if you keep it at 35, they're gonna continue to go 45. And those people on that bike path are gonna get run over, and those people on that sidewalk are gonna get run over.
Thank you. We will respond, official response by mail, and also we'll be here after the presentation if anyone wants to speak to some of the staff at the boards. The next speaker, speaker number three?
I'm James Atkinson, I live at 1234 Northeast Avenue. The, I was hoping there would be an ability to kind of do a question and answer, but I guess there's not gonna be, I guess we're just gonna raise the questions and no one here can actually answer those, is that correct?
Well, right now, we're just taking public comment, but our staff will be here after the presentation if you want to talk to some of us and answer some of your questions.
My, we had two people that have been run over, one has been killed in front of it and one was seriously injured, I think he may have died also. So personally, the way this, this typical section is laid out, I think it's, I think it's excellent. I think getting people away from the traffic lanes is just a extremely good idea. The, I understand the grassed median concept, the grassed median concept is there to allow future development, future lanes, traffic, emergency lanes, those type of things. As a taxpayer, I'm just concerned about the actual cost, and I'm wondering whether, it's my understanding, some people I've talked to, that state of Florida can a large amount of funds set aside for the East Coast Expressway that's not gonna be built. I'm wondering if this is going to be moved up faster than the five-year plan, I know it's not in the five-year plan. People I've talked to tend to think that it may be moved up. I was wondering if that was something that, also, I also wanted to ask what type of funding issues would there be with the federal government passing the Stimulus Act and putting money into transportation that they claim is going to be transportation? I'm wondering how much the state of Florida is gonna get on that and how much that might move some of the projects forward. East Avenue is heavily, heavily traveled by pedestrians. Pedestrians don't buy gasoline and they don't pay taxes for roads like people that travel with cars and stuff like that. However, there's the need to protect pedestrians, our sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, those kind of people that aren't necessarily doing that. So I like that concept. I see nothing in the concept in regards to retention ponds and that kind of thing. I'm wondering if the design is going to try to retain, do retention ponds or retain the initial water that's in contact with the road in the center and the grassy areas instead of taking up additional properties that want to be, that would be one of my concerns with taking the property that the state is actually buying and putting the retention areas and stuff like that in the grassy areas, the medians, those type of things instead of having a, a large segment or a large portions of property taken out where they're actually going to have, they're both gonna be dead pieces of property with, you know, with miniature man-made weapons on them. I probably not liking retention areas and weapons because while I understand the need for the court to return the rent, it also provides mosquito breeding areas and that kind of stuff. But this is not actually, I particularly do like, I think, to be in a state, East Avenue is a benefit, I think, a business owner, and I've had the property here for quite a while, it'll be something that will increase my property value. Once again, just concerned about the cost to the taxpayer. I know we live in a society where taxes doesn't seem to be an issue, we're just gonna spend, we spend our children's and grandchildren's inheritance away. However, I also understand the aspect of, this project is never gonna be cheaper than now, my construction things and things like that, they're a whole cost. I understand that there are things what we do now that are on the page back fifty years. I find the design very pleasing. I think that it would, say, two people, then run over, you know, like, I know for a fact that I don't love people that I'm not. I know there's been a number of deaths on East Avenue. The concept of having the rent, you know, I know we're loving the rent, it's hard, it's much crap, it's all these things, I'm kind of questioning how that might work out. It'll be interesting to see how that concept works out. But, like I said, I have a number of questions about whether the project can be moved forward. If Florida hits a number of funding, whether that can move the number of projects forward. I kind of want to know how many projects are ahead of this project and funding and stuff like that. But I will grab some of those questions, I guess, since no one can really answer those yet. those. I guess I'll kind of send that in. That's kind of what I'm hanging on to.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay, does anyone else, would anybody else like to speak? If so, please make your way to the microphone, state your name and address, and complete a speaker's card for the public record after you've given your statement. Nope. Okay. If not, we will now call upon our online participants who requested to speak at registration. Amanda Handley will moderate the online comments, and I'll now turn it over to her.
Good evening. I, we will start tonight with those who registered online. We had one person register ahead of time. However, I don't see Roy Whitaker here under his name. Roy, if you were online as someone else's another name, would you please be so kind as to go ahead and raise your hand so that I can call on you and unmute you? Okay, well, I don't see anyone raising their hand, so at this point, we will go ahead and move to our other online participants. If there is anyone online who would like to speak but who did not pre-register, please go ahead and use the raise your hand function on your GoToWebinar control panel, and I will call on you and unmute you so that you can provide comment. Anyone? Anyone looking to speak? Okay, Tori, I'm not seeing anyone else raise their hand, so I think at this point, we are good to hand it back to you.
Thank you, Amanda. All written comments must be postmarked or emailed to the project manager, myself, Tori White, no later than Friday, November 26, 2021. My contact information is shown on the slide and is also located in the handout. You may also visit the project website at northwestflorideroads.com/virtualmeetings to view documents and submit comments related to this project. The exact transcript of this hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing record and all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing, will be made a part of the project decision, decision-making process and will be for public review upon request after Friday, November 19, 2021. This concludes the public comment period. Thank you for attending this public hearing and providing your input into this project. It is now 6:33, and I hereby officially close the public hearing for the State Road 389 East Avenue PD&amp;D study. Thank you and have a safe evening.